And because we failed to have a full quorum here, we've got to continue some matters. And I defer. Oh, and I should tell you that as required by the law, the town may audio or video record the meeting, which it is doing. Any person intending to either audio or video record this open session is requested to inform the chair. Okay, seeing none, we'll begin the meeting.
And if I may, just a point of clarification, we have a quorum for the meeting, we just have a number of people have requested continuances because we only have four people.
I agree. Okay? Can you, do you want to make some motions?
So you have to open the, if you open them, I'll make some motions.
PB 2019-32.
It's reopening all of them.
It's a reopening? John F. E. Pena and Thomas J. and Jody C. Blut, as owners care of Kieran J. Healy, PLS.
Okay. So I move that this matter be continued, the public hearing be continued until October 8th at no earlier than 6:30 PM.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Next, PB 2019-29, Davenport Companies, applicant and prospective buyer care of Filippo Scholamed.
Scholamedy.
Scholamedy, PLS.
Okay, I move that PB 2019-29 be continued until October 8th, no earlier than 6:30 PM.
And second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, PB 2019-31, KNT Realty Trust, as applicant care of John D. McKelley, PLS, representative. Motion with regard to that?
I move that PB 2019-31 for KNT Realty Trust as applicant be continued until October 8th, no earlier than 6:30 PM.
Favor?
Second?
Favor? All in favor? Aye. Posed? It's done. Next is PB 2019-34, Martin D. Rich, care of Timothy Brady, PLS, and PE representative, seeking approval of a seven lot subdivision.
So I move that PB 2019-34, Martin D. Rich, care of Timothy Brady, our representative, be continued until October 8th, no earlier than 6:30 PM.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Done. Finally, PB 2019-36, Deerfield Nominee Trust, William Marsh trustee as owner, seeks approval of a site plan.
So once again, I move that PB 2019-36, Deerfield Nominee Trust, William Marsh trustee as owner, be continued until October 8th, no earlier than 6:30 PM.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Done. Okay, we'll do the David Clark matter next. Is that right? Next matter on the agenda is Route 137 Development LLC owner, David A. Clark, PE Clark Engineering LLC representative, seeking approval of a 10 lot preliminary subdivision, one of which is a panhandle lot and one parcel. The application was pursuant to the code of the Town of Harwich 400, chapter 400, article 2, as set forth in Mass. General Law's chapter 41, paragraph 88K through GG and 325-18Q. The property is located on Chatham-Brewster Road, also known as Route 137, between Chris Gebeth Circle and Sherwood Road, on assessor's map 97-108, with a portion of the land being identified as parcels miscellaneous 50, miscellaneous 69 and 70. The land is in the RR and WR zoning district, and the matter was continued from September 10th. Somebody from the development, or their representative, go ahead, sir.
David Clark, Clark Engineering, on behalf of Route 137 Development LLC. As stated, we have filed a preliminary plan under the subdivision control law to create 10 single-family dwelling lots on 12 acres in East Harwich. The plan that was filed shows 10 lots, all lots comply with the area shape, frontage requirements. The subdivision requires the building of, I believe, somewhere around 1,600 linear feet of road. This project, the timing of this project is such that we expect to be connected to the municipal sewer, which is underway at this time. Representative from Robert B. Hour states that they anticipate to be in front of this property sometime in December, which would be far ahead of when we would get started. As I stated, we believe this subdivision conforms to your rules and regulations and also the zoning bylaw as to the size, shape, and frontage of the lots.
Okay, members of the board, anybody have any questions with respect to this proposal?
Could we have Charlene's report?
Certainly, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, there is a great deal of misinformation out there right now regarding this application and this property. I fielded today a couple different emails from folks regarding a 40B. This is not a 40B that is before the board right now, it is simply a 10 lot preliminary subdivision. That being said, we did hear from several departments, conservation, highway, and police have no concerns regarding this 10 lot preliminary subdivision. The Health Department, at a meeting held on September 10th, the Board of Health unanimously voted to approve the preliminary subdivision plan request with the following conditions: these would need to be abided by at the time a definitive plan is filed. One, the lots shall be served by town water. Two, if the dwellings are to be occupied prior to the connection of the municipal sewer system, the septic system line shall exit the foundation on the street side of the buildings. Three, if the dwellings are to be occupied prior to the connection to the municipal sewer system, fully compliant septic systems are required to serve the dwelling. Four is relative to if in the future a 40B is done here, should the lots not be developed under 40B, an environmental impact review, actually it's if a 40B is not done. So an environmental impact review under Board of Health Regulations 1.211 would have to be completed and full compliance with state and local regulations is required prior to development. We did hear from the town engineer today, he indicated that the graphics drawing scale depicted on the plan appears to be incorrect. Two, the proposed stormwater management system shall be designed in accordance with the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection Stormwater Handbook. The proposed project is located entirely within a Zone 2 wellhead protection area, which is defined as a critical area. Secondly, based on the preliminary plan submitted, it appears that there are unused portions of the land that are not buildable lots adjacent to the proposed roadway. It is recommended that the proponent evaluate these areas for the potential options for vegetative stormwater treatment, i.e. rain gardens, bioretention areas, water quality swales, et cetera, as the stormwater best management practices provide for an enhanced water quality nutrients. The contour labels are not visible on the plan, and the approximate limit of clearing does not appear to be depicted. This is a preliminary subdivision, they are only required to show things like drainage in a very general manner, same with the lot lines and the road. Regarding my comments, municipal mean certificate was not submitted, however, this is a newly acquired property, previously owner unknown, and there wouldn't be no certificates available at this time, it won't be taxed until January. Two, each lot appears to meet the necessary requirements for zoning, including lot area shape factor and frontage. Lot 10 would be a panhandle pursuant to section 325-18Q. And three, as the board only has until September 28th to take action on this application, it is recommended that the board make a decision this evening. There are three options, actually there's four options available, but generally it is to approve, approve with conditions or modifications, or deny, or the board can simply take no action, in which case it would then be constructively approved. A preliminary plan really has no bearing or importance, quite honestly, in the grand scheme of things. If there was a zoning change being proposed, this would lock in the application under that zoning. It also does protect for a certain period of time under the Board of Health Regulations, but there's no, there's nothing really to be protected with this plan. So those are my comments. The only other thing is if the board was inclined to approve with conditions or modification, I would suggest that it be subject to issues raised by all town departments.
Just a question, if I might?
Yes, sir.
We lack a quorum, how can we approve it?
You do not lack a quorum, you have a quorum of the board, it's a seven-member board, you have four people. For a preliminary subdivision, it's a majority of the members present, so technically you only need three members voting in favor of this for it to be approved as a preliminary.
I see.
It's a special permit, then we need five?
Okay. All right. Anybody here, first on the board, anybody on the board have any questions? Yes?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Mr. Clark, you mentioned that you spoke with Bobby Hour about the sewer, when you said it would be in front of the property, you mean on Route 137?
Yeah.
Because you don't have a road in yet?
Yeah, they're proposing a manhole at the intersection of Landrum, and we anticipate tying into that.
Tying into that, okay. And is that part of Phase 1 or Phase 2, do you know?
I don't think there is a Phase 1, everything's Phase 2.
Phase 1 was the actual proposal, was the actual comprehensive wastewater management plan.
That's their best guess, this summer.
And then, who then becomes responsible for the sewer in the new unnamed street in your subdivision? Is that you, or is that the town?
After the applicant constructs it, and it's approved by whomever the governing board's going to be.
Right, it's Board of Selectmen.
It'll be Board of Selectmen, then I would imagine it would be under the town's responsibility to maintain, similar to the water main.
You say maintain, but I was asking specifically the installation of the pipe.
Installation of the pipe would be on the applicant.
Okay.
And the future connections of each individual house would be on the applicant. But once it's constructed, the actual main itself is maintained by the town.
Right.
Same with the water main.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else?
Just a general question regarding the exiting of the sanitary sewer lines to the front of the house, is that a statutory or regulatory requirement of the town, or is it something you have to add as a discretionary addition every time you give your comments?
This is from the Board of Health directly, so it's what they're requiring. I don't know the requirements, however, in conversations that I have been part of, they are trying to get folks to actually put the sewer line out the front.
I understand the reason for it and so on, I'm just wondering if it has been enacted into law, or is it a regulatory requirement?
I can't answer that, I don't know.
We have always done that, but I don't believe there's any mandate to it.
After we decided there was going to be a town sewer.
It may be in the sewer regs, I've honestly not read them.
Because you keep adding it, and I didn't know if it was like a code requirement that you're just reinforcing.
My guess is it's something that the Board of Health is reinforcing, because these are their requirements.
More curious, it doesn't relate to this so much as curiosity.
It's also, if I might, you know, people are, who need to hook in, their septic systems are out the backyard, and now they're trying to figure out how to get it. So they're encouraging anybody building new homes, or doing subdivisions, or any kind of development, put them out the front.
I understand the rationale for it, I agree with that, it was just more a curiosity question of the regulatory, statutory, or whatever requirement there may be.
Mr. Chairman, I had the same, sort of similar question in that I thought I read somewhere about Phase 2 or Phase 3, that there could be, or part of the plans are, there could be some pipe that isn't necessarily in the street, it could end up running, what do they call it, cross-land, or, there's a name for it, no?
Cross-country.
Cross-country, yes, thank you. So my understanding across country is it's not down the middle or side of the street, it could be through somebody's, maybe not their backyard, but through land, because that's the shortest route to get to the next junction, or...
Like an alley.
Yeah, 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 possibly, I don't know.
There would more than likely be sewer easements in various locations, because you're right, it may be easier to go through an easement to get to a neighborhood rather than looping all the way around for roads.
Turn up the road to do it.
Right.
And in which case, that clause...
But that's somebody else.
Yeah, yeah.
It's more that it has to go, the flow has to go.
Down, gravity, right.
Unless there's a pumping station.
Or else you need a pumping station, so.
That's one of the firm rules of plumbing.
That's what the cross-countrays are doing.
Anybody else?
I have a couple of questions. First, through you, Mr. Chair, to Charlene. Charlene, is there anything on the engineering issues that need to be dealt with on the preliminary plan, or is everything something that would simply be dealt with on a...
On the definitive.
On the definitive. The only thing I, the one thing in particular I was a little bit concerned about was the scale issue, because...
That would have to be corrected at the time of the definitive filing, it really has no bearing on the preliminary.
Okay.
There are two problems with the scale. One is, is the 0, 60, 90, it should be 120, but at 0 to 60 is, you know, this is, scale is all wrong.
90 should have been 120.
But more equally important, it doesn't seem to fit with the dimensions on the plan, so.
So that was my...
But since the scale is so messed up, how could they?
That was my only concern.
The scale is correct, the scale bar is correct, the 90 should be a 120. That's the only error.
Okay.
I just checked the plan, the plan scales correctly at 60 scale, and the scale bar scales correctly, it's the 90 was mislabeled.
And also through you, Mr. Chair, to Charlene, there's really nothing that we would get in place of a municipal lien certificate, or even a negative statement from the assessor saying that, saying the property wasn't, hasn't been assessed.
We don't ask for anything from the assessor, the municipal lien comes from the tax collector, and it's just, we haven't taxed it, we have nothing.
All right.
Not unusual, you've seen this in the last few meetings, just about every meeting.
Just didn't recall it, that's all.
Yeah.
Okay, nothing more for me.
And I have a question. We can vote on it, even though the town engineer says the graphic drawing isn't correct, I guess is what he's...
There's just, the graphic, it is correct, there's just one number that is in error.
Oh, that's what that was?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
It was a Scrivener's error.
I like that word.
Anybody else on the board? Anybody in the audience who wishes to be heard, or has anything to say about this matter? Then you need to spec, step up to the microphone, identify yourself if you'd be so kind, and tell us what you, whatever you have to say.
Thank you. My name's Clara McCarty, I live in East Harwich, Pleasant Bay Road. I was one of the misinformed people that heard about the 40B thing, and I admit that I am very ignorant about town politics, policy, and all the procedures, so I may say irrelevant things, but I've been reading...
Wouldn't be the first time, ma'am, don't worry about it.
And there is no politics here, there may be other places, but this is regulatory.
I've been reading a lot about affordable housing to understand what 40B is, and this may, it seems to me that 40B is the state stepping in and telling us, no, 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 Harwich, you have way too many luxury homes, and second homes, and expensive properties, and you don't have enough affordable homes to have a healthy community. This is bad, this is bad throughout the whole state, and the state is incentivizing something else. And so we are vulnerable to very undesirable developments because of this disproportion. I think that it is more desirable to control, I'm a mother, so I always am telling my kids, if you control yourself, I will not have to manage you, boss you around, and set a bunch of regulation. If you don't, I will. And to me, it seems more desirable that the town of Harwich would regulate ourselves and say amongst ourselves, we do not wish to have a town filled with luxury homes, and no homes for many important people who are integral to our community, and so we will regulate ourselves, then 40B will not need to loom over us and boss us around, we will not be subject to bypassing our local zoning. So this is an example, all around East Harwich, every time I see the bulldozers, I see the topsoil cleared away, I see just everything going down, another ugly, big, tacky development going in, my stomach churns, and of course I say, well, this is global, this is a huge problem, who can stop it, what can we do? But I've been thinking, perhaps as a town, we could be visionary, we could have a different idea, I suppose planning board, planning is, you know, we're going to say, we're not just going to go for the short-term obvious gain, we're not going to do the first thing at, quick profit, or get some tax revenue, we're going to think long-term, we're going to look at the big picture, we're going to plan to avoid these pitfalls. So I suppose we could plan to not build any more luxury homes, to not build any more homes that cost 500, 600, $800,000, because those do not serve our community. Our community is already in a debt to people who are important and integral, and can't afford to live here. I don't know who would make this regulation, but I would like to think that if we all had a vote, many of the people who are residents in Harwich, we own property here, we own homes, we see this process, we all hate it, we all know that the laws and the zoning do not protect bumblebees, native bumblebees are in decline. If certain wildflowers and certain bumblebees die...
Ma'am, you need to talk about this case.
Okay. Well anyhow, so this case, these 10 luxury homes, these big expensive homes, they will add to the imbalance that we already have, and so I was wondering if there's anything that the zoning board can do to address that problem. And I also wondered, if we were not sewer-ing, would this be possible? Would it be different? And also, if the town does not vote to continue to fund Phase 2, because all of the funding has not been voted on yet, does that change anything?
I'm not so sure I know an answer to that question. Anybody on the board? Not that I know of.
I'm not getting into phases of the sewer, this subdivision as laid out would be allowed regardless of the sewer.
Even with septic.
Even with the septic.
Thank you.
And also, this is only a division of land, there's nothing here about what would be developed on this, and it's also only a preliminary.
I see. Okay, thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you for presenting. Anybody else wishes to be heard? Yes, ma'am, just be kind enough to tell us your name and...
Sure, I'm Peggy Gabor. I guess my question is, and I came in later, but once the preliminary, should you decide to go forward, you said that anything could be developed here, that this is just preliminary, and my concern, I thought that's what you just said, that this is just preliminary design. I agree, it is. And that the applicant cannot come back and change the single-family 10 lot design. That's been approved.
Is that a question, ma'am?
Yeah, that's a question. Can I come back and say, instead of the 10 single families, and, that are on these, instead of, well, the 10 lots, which are single-family, I assume? We don't know yet?
I'm not responding until I hear everything.
All right, my question is, can it get changed into 100-unit 40B on these 10 lots?
Go ahead.
This is a 10 lot preliminary subdivision plan.
Okay.
Developer chooses to move forward with a 10 lot subdivision, they would then come in with what's referred, what's called under Mass. General Law, a definitive subdivision plan.
Correct.
That being said, if the developer decides he wants to come in and do one giant lot, he can do that. If he wants to come in and do a 40B, he can do that.
Okay, so it doesn't end here?
But not under this application.
It wouldn't be under this application, it would be a new application.
A new application.
It wouldn't be under this board either.
Yeah. A 40B is under the zoning board of appeals, not the planning board.
Okay.
It's a comprehensive permit, so they have the authority under a comprehensive permit to grant all requirements under local regulations.
Okay, and do we have a 40R?
We do not have a 40R.
Are we pursuing a 40R?
Not at this time, and I doubt we ever would, we don't have public transportation to support a 40R.
All right, thank you.
What's 40R?
It's a, it's a provision under Mass. General Law, which allows for creative and incentive zoning in your core areas, but it also requires that you actually have transportation. We don't really have that, so, that's kind of a quick overview, there's way more to it.
Oh, sure, okay, thank you. Sir?
Sandy McCarty, East Harwich. So if the board denied this application, would it have any bearing in a future 40B project, or a different project?
No.
Are they isolated, they're completely different?
No. And the board would have to have a reason to deny this as a preliminary subdivision plan, if there was something, if it didn't comply with zoning, or something really technically wrong with the plan, or was drawn in a napkin. You know, they, the board could say, this doesn't meet the requirements for the submission, or if they refuse to show lot lines, but said, I want 10 lots, but haven't shown those, the board could deny that. But, you know, there's really nothing here that the board can really say no to, at this point, as a preliminary subdivision.
Yeah, and just for my sake, is, so this is like a placeholder for the builder, really? What's the purpose of a preliminary application?
Generally, in the past, it's been used to freeze zoning, if a zoning amendment were to take place, you see a lot of preliminary plans filed to freeze the zoning, because zoning gets frozen for a period of eight years, it's kind of cumulative, but that's usually what a preliminary is for. If it's commercial land, you have to do a preliminary plan, if it, if commercial land is involved. This is all residential, a lot of times folks will come in with a preliminary just to get some feedback from the planning board, neighbors, staff.
So when you say freeze, this would basically...
There's nothing to freeze, because there's been no zoning changes.
Okay, but it would basically be a placeholder under the zoning at the current time of application, is that what you mean?
Right, but there's no...
I got you.
Yeah, there's no changes.
Thank you, that was just for me.
Planning in Massachusetts is extremely archaic, and we do the best we can with what we have to work with.
Hi, Wayne Robillard, Route 137, Harwich. Can I ask what the smallest lot size is, and what the largest lot size is? Because I know there's a, an issue with the scale, like acreage wise.
They're all about 40,000 square feet, sir. Have a quick look. They're all around 40,000.
Okay.
Give or take.
And if I might, it was the graphic scale that had a typo in it, the scale to the plan is, there's nothing wrong with the scale of the plan.
Okay, so I have two other questions. Someone wanted to buy the first three lots, or the first four lots, and then someone else bought the next three, and then the three on the other side of the street, how much 40B housing could go on those three parcels of land?
Sir, we're not here looking at it as a 40B.
Well, I know you're not, but I believe, well...
We can't answer that.
We have nothing to do with it.
You can't answer that?
Because we have nothing to base anything on, or nothing to do with that.
Okay, do you know what the requirements are for that?
For a 40B?
Yes.
Can I just give an overview?
Please.
All 40B is, is an application where a developer is coming in, they want, they want to not comply with local zoning, and it is to get affordable units, and to get more affordable units on lesser space than would be allowed under our regular zoning. That's what it is, the state allows them to come in and do it, it goes through the zoning board of appeals, so it has nothing to do with us at all, and it's not even something...
Okay, so that would be at a future meeting for something else?
It wouldn't even be this board, it would be the zoning board of appeals. If the developer decided that they wanted to do that, they would make a 40B application with what they wanted to do, and where they wanted to do it, and the zoning board of appeals has authority over all things, and yes, zoning... has authority over, over all things. And yes, zoning can get, can get bypassed in certain circumstances, but it has nothing to do with the 10, 10-lot subdivision.
Okay.
So, we can't, we, we can't even give you a guess as to what could go on three lots or four lots.
Okay.
There's just no way to do it.
Yeah, because you know the open space thing there? We, I had a commercial property behind my house, and they have way exceeded their open space allotment. And I just don't wanna see this happening. I know this is residential, and that's commercial.
Big difference.
But it's, yeah, but if you live there, I mean, you, you look on the plot plan, it's all developed. There is nowhere near 40-whatever percent of open space. So, I just would like to prevent this in the future.
Thank you. Anybody else wishes to be heard? Okay, go ahead. Just identify yourself, please.
Scott Smith, East Harwich. Is this just a lot as it's laid out? That's what sitting there to use? Or can that be expanded, or as far as the amount of land, that's the yellow circle that's around, as far as the amount of land, can that spread out anymore? Is that the usable space?
That's the usable space, and there's 10 lots laid out in that usable space.
If I may, that's, that's the lot. That's all that is.
That's all that's available. There's no more available outside of that.
Oh, I see your question.
Okay.
And that we can't actually answer, because...
As far as we know, right?
Right.
That's the lot, as it is now.
That's the lot as it's been proposed.
Yeah. Anybody else? Please identify yourself.
William, Dean Williams. I live on Sherwood Road. And we're abutters to this project, and I wanna know if there will be buffer zones for people who do abut it, and when there will be formal notification to the abutters?
I didn't hear the question.
There is a buffer zone on that side, but you can answer, sir, if you will.
I didn't, I didn't hear the question.
Under a preliminary subdivision, there's no requirement to notify abutters. That's Mass. General Law. That's not our, our rules. Under a definitive subdivision, abutters would be notified via certified mail.
And when would that happen?
That isn't a question.
When there is an application made.
And so, we don't know when that would be, the formal application?
We don't know when that would be.
And last but not least, has anybody addressed the issue of this being a water recharge area and a drinking water protection zone and part of the larger Pleasant Bay watershed?
It was brought up in the Town Engineers Report and also in the Board of Health Report in that it has to meet Title V, meaning that it has to, there can be no more than, under the 10-lot subdivision, no more than 10,000 square feet, or one bedroom per 10,000 square feet for each of the lots.
That's actually under the growth-neutral policy of...
And under the growth-neutral policy under the sewer, it also would be limited under the subdivision to one bedroom per 10,000 square feet.
Under, under, Title V doesn't apply this subdivision, because it would be connecting to sewer.
You're right. But it's still the one, ten, one bedroom per 10,000 square feet.
Under the growth-neutral policy.
Yes.
Anything else, ma'am?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wishes to be heard? Okay, move to close the hearing?
It's not a hearing.
It's not a hearing.
So, we don't need to close it?
You don't need to close it.
And how about a motion?
So, I would move to approve with conditions the preliminary plan entitled preliminary division plan prepared for Route 137 Development LLC dated 6/28/2019, Scale 1 to 60 by Clark Engineering LLC and Odomos Land Survey, Inc., Sheet 1 of 1 for Case PB 2019-35, Route 137 Development LLC, subject to the issues raised by all town departments, including, but not limited to, conservation, highway, police, health, engineering, and planning staff comments.
Okay.
Engineer.
Second?
Second with a question.
Second. Go ahead. You have a question?
Discussion after a second.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Do we need to put anything in that motion to indicate that we corrected the guidance scale?
No.
Thank you.
I did, I did include engineering. My intention was to include engineering. Yeah, I believe I did.
Okay.
For clarification.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Matter resolved. Thank you.
CPC.
Zero, Harwich.
So, CPC has required that any applications made to them receive support from different boards and committees. Last year was the first year that happened, and we did bring forward the Affordable, Harwich Affordable Housing Trust application to this board to see if they would be willing to support the application, this year's application. And it's all based on money available. Would definitely be $50,000 for the part-time affordable housing coordinator, and if there is $500,000 available for projects funding.
Has that coordinator been appointed?
Yes.
Who was it?
They've been on board since last December. It is the, is CDP, Community Development Partnership out of Eastham. Andrea Donna and Palinda Deegan have been serving as the coordinator.
Okay, thank you.
This is coordinator.
Do we, we need a vote?
If you wish to...
So, I'd like to talk about it just for a second.
Sure.
I am in, personally, I think as the planning board, you know, it is the $500,000 application with the, with the 50 added on is certainly more money to go into the pot of money that the housing trust currently has in order to seek out new affordable developments. So, I have supported them in the past couple of years, and I would, I personally would support this one as well. As far as the planning board is concerned, I am the CPC rep, so, you know, really, everything, my CPC review on behalf of this board will depend on money allowed and money available for, for totals. But, you know, I, I am in favor of us continuing to support the, the, the housing trust.
So, we need a, we need a vote?
Because as we know, I, I think it would be beneficial if, if this board is willing to support the applications. It would be, it would certainly show CPC as a whole that, that we believe some of the affordable housing money should go towards the affordable housing trust.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, and Mary, you probably can help me or correct me if I'm wrong, but I watched the selectman's meeting last night, and this particular issue came up. And I think they decided that they, they were gonna have it come back to them and have it split out 50,000 for the coordinator, because there were questions about that.
I don't know whether they were splitting it out. I know they, they said they were bringing it back.
Yeah, we can't split the application at this point.
Right. So, should, I guess the question is, since they weren't able to decide, and there are questions about the 50,000 for the coordinator and the 500 for the land acquisition, should we wait to see what they come up with?
So, they're not the applicant?
They're not the applicant. The Affordable Housing Trust is the applicant.
Okay.
We're seeking support from different entities. That's a requirement now from the Community Preservation Committee.
Okay.
And, and from what I recall, they, they simply asked questions and said they were gonna bring it back next week. I, I didn't get the sense that there was, that there wasn't support for it. But they're, again, they're not the applicant. It's the...
This is selectman you're talking about.
Yeah.
Yes. It's the, the applicant is the housing, is the housing trust.
Mike McCaskill was questioning the 50,000 versus the 30,000 that originally, for six months, and then another 30 for the 12 months, and now the 50, and was just...
Right.
So, okay.
Right. Yeah, he just asked for information, and I think they were gonna...
Yeah, I agree. I don't think they were.
Next week. I would, I didn't know if anybody else had anything before.
Anybody else have any comment?
So, I would, I would move that the planning board write a letter to the Community Preservation Commission in support of the housing trust and housing coordinator application with the total of 500,000 towards the trust and 50,000 towards a housing coordinator.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Done.
The second application, which is a joint application between the real estate and open space, and the Affordable Housing Trust, is land off of Zero Deacon's Folly. It was actually before you this evening, but could not move forward, for a joint land acquisition of the property. Half the land would be used for conservation purposes and tie into existing conservation land owned by the town and also by the Affordable, or the Harwich...
Conservation Trust.
Conservation Trust, thank you. Just had a total mental blank.
Freecrap?
And the other half would be utilized for affordable housing purposes. It is on a paved road. There'd be little infrastructure, you know, so the idea is to have a joint application between these two entities. Right now, the requested amount is the asking price of the property, which is 1.2 million. We are awaiting an appraisal. Once we have the appraisal, further conversations can be had with the owner of the property to see if it's still something viable for us to go forward with.
Do we need a motion?
Only if you want to support it.
So...
Any other comments or questions?
My comment is similar to the one that I made with the last. I am certainly in favor of, of, of anything that supports affordable housing. You know, one of our three buckets under CPC is affordable housing money. I don't know, I won't know yet whether I, I personally, on the CPC side, would, could support the, the full dollar value of, of both of these applications together. So, I say that with this one being 1.2. I believe, if Charlene, correct me if I'm wrong, 600 was to come out of open space...
It would be a 50-50 split.
And 600 out of...
Community housing.
Community, affordable housing bucket. So, but in general, I am in support of the application, which would promote affordable housing, so.
Do we need a motion?
In conservation.
In conservation as well.
Anybody else have any comment?
Just a question, since this is the same property as, as PB 2019-34, is that any complication we need?
No, sir. In my opinion, no.
Okay. Anybody else?
A follow-up to Mr. Harris's question. Is there, is the application just referred to coming before us as part of the desire to get an appraisal?
No.
Is that something totally separate?
Has nothing to do with that.
So, this is an, an application, do we know that this is an application where, if approved, that, the, that this would be a done deal, provided they have the money?
We don't.
We don't know. Okay. Thank you.
So, I would move that the planning board write a letter to the Community Preservation Commission in support of the housing trust's application for the Deacons' Folly land acquisition for both affordable housing and open space conservation.
A second?
Second.
May I speak before you?
Wait a minute. Okay?
Second.
Okay. Sir, would you identify yourself, please?
Yeah, Marty Rich. I own the property. In question, the asking price is 1.4, not 1.2.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rich. Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Anybody else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Rich. Okay. We have a dividend that, do we need a...
We're gonna, no, because you don't have enough people to sign it.
Okay.
And we can probably skip the meeting minutes, too. Do you wanna postpone the meeting?
And if people have any changes they would like made, of people who are there, you need to let me know prior to the meeting, and we can make any adjustments for those who were in attendance.
Okay.
I have, I made a comment, since the, one of the fundamental components of the application was, was based on the cultural heritage of Captain's Row. If that would, and ask Serae if that would strengthen and be a valuable part of the application. Yes, I just don't like that reflected in the minutes.
Okay. So done. Anybody else? Sir?
Mr. Chairman, Charlene, I wasn't clear on that. Can I bring up the corrections or clarifications that I had requested?
Ask, ask the chairman? Well, it, it was voted.
What was voted? The minutes?
No, we, we voted the last time, didn't we? Four to one?
Forwarded to the board. Oh, yeah. No, my, my question is...
It was five to one. He wants to add changes to the meeting minutes based on his memos, and we actually reference that his memos are available. I don't believe those need to be in the meeting minutes.
I think I moved them into the, into the record, didn't I?
Yeah, you did.
Yeah.
And they're in a file as part of the record.
Yeah, but they, they wouldn't be verbatim in the, in the minutes, though.
Right. And I, I wasn't looking for them to be verbatim. I was just looking for a clarification, because I think the way that a couple of the bullet points are written now could easily be misinterpreted. For example, I had requested via email to Charlene and a copy to you, Mr. Chairman, that, on, I'm looking at page nine, that, if I can find it. Bottom on page nine? Yes, thank you. Skip over to page 10, if you would. For instance, the first bullet on page 10 starts, "The building is structurally unsound. It is not economically feasible to make the repairs that would be required to make the building livable." And what I asked for was that, to start off, the way this reads, if I were to pick this up without any knowledge, and looking at the, the letter that, that you had read, that I had provided to the, or sent to the board, that I, I said that. And I did not say that Trinity Engineering Group said that. And I referenced that in my memo. I'm not looking for verbatim to be copied from my memo to the minutes. I'm just looking for clarification. So, what I asked for here was something that would say, start saying, "Trinity Engineering Group prepared a report to the HDHC that said," and the rest of it, just like the next bullet says, "The fire chief presented a letter."
But, but I mean, that...
Why wouldn't you say Trinity?
From my perspective, that's the underlying record of the, of the Historic Commission.
What is?
Those points, those came to the Historic Commission on the demo delay.
Right.
So, those weren't even part of...
No, but they were part of my memo. And...
Yes.
So, that, what's being highlighted...
But your memo is part of, but your memo is part of the record, right?
Correct.
So...
But if, as I said, if I were, did not have the knowledge, and I simply picked up the minutes three years from now and read this, I would say, oh, Chadwick said, "The building is structurally unsound, blah, blah, blah." How does he know that? When in fact, Trinity Engineering said that. I said that in my memo. Trinity Engineering said. So, that's all I'm asking, is that it be correctly attributed to the party that made the statement, just like...
Which was you?
No. I quoted the Trinity Engineering Report.
All right, all right.
So, all I'm looking for here is that the Trinity Engineering Report stated the, and you can say, "In their opinion," or whatever you want. I don't care.
But my point is that Trinity Engineering Report wasn't a part of the record. The Trinity Engineering Report was part of the record before the, before the Historic Commission under the demo delay.
Correct.
So, to me, to me, that portion was, was really irrelevant to, to us last week, two weeks ago, because that was dealt with by the Historic Commission on the demo delay.
Total agreement that that was done by the HDHC? My understanding of the minutes is to reflect what took place at the last meeting. The last meeting, there was a memo read by me in which I said, "In September of 2018, the Trinity Engineering Group provided a report to HDC that said, 'The building is structurally sound.'" So, now, we're doing the minutes to reflect what was said in that meeting.
Yeah.
That's what was said in my memo. That's what was read to the board.
Read into the record. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so I agree, my memo is part of the record.
Right. And to me, that, that's, that's kind of my point.
That covers...
It's, it's in the record. I mean, how, how big of a deal is it to make a motion and to, to add the reference?
I would table these meeting minutes, and people who want whatever changes made, get those changes to us. We will include them.
And we'll look at them.
And you'll bring them back the next meeting.
I have a motion to table the, the meeting minutes?
Can we, a motion to table the meeting minutes until the next...
You don't need a motion. You can just say...
Regular meeting. Well, we'll just move it.
I rule.
Okay.
Joe rules.
Joe rules.
We table them.
I need to withdraw.
You need to withdraw the motion, start with.
I withdraw.
Okay, and...
So, I don't understand what we just did.
So we're not voting on the minutes tonight?
We're going to put the meeting minutes of September 10th are now on the table.
If you want, if you want change in the minutes, send an email to Charlene.
That is...
This is what I want to change to.
And that, that has already been done?
And it'll come the next, it'll come back before it's the next meeting.
Okay.
Is that not correct, Charlene?
Charlene, do you want me to rewrite?
Yours are two pages long of changes. So I, you, you need to ask the chair what you want changed. Meeting minutes are not verbatim minutes.
Correct. And I'm not looking for them to be.
And...
That's not what I'm asking, at all.
He has a different question. He submitted a couple of documents.
Absolutely.
You submitted a couple of documents.
No, we didn't.
I, I submitted...
He submitted a memo.
I submitted an email to you and Charlene asking that a couple of clarifications to these minutes that we were just talking about be made to correctly reflect what was in my memo.
Okay.
To avoid any misinterpretation or misunderstanding.
So they're currently on the table, and if, whatever you want to change, you'll submit in writing?
I've already submitted it in an email to you and to Charlene.
All right, done.
You have it.
Should we keep this package from, for today's meeting? It'll be, it'll be updated, but just for the date.
I hung on to mine.
Pretty much.
Okay. Anything further?
I just want to be clear, I do not need to submit anything, is that correct? Since I've already submitted it.
We'll add everything you sent.
Okay.
Is what I just said okay, or do you want me to write it?